To go ahead and call to order our March 1st meeting for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This, I think, is the closest we've had two meetings together that I can think of, being on the first. I'll go ahead and start since we're, we've got some folks here, some folks online. I'll go ahead and we'll just check and confirm everybody that's here first. Rebecca Bryant, are you here? Okay. I see Art Dyson is here visually. Harry Kohler, I see that's you unless you found some new kind of a app to make it look like you're at our meeting, or so I need to get information about that. John Worsham, are you here?
Yes, I am.
See JW, all right. Holly McAllaire, McKeller, are you here? All right. Jason Langley, are you here?
I'm here.
All right, I see Jimmy Conyers here. Clarice, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right.
Lee, I'm here as well. This is Rebecca.
Yes, yes, okay. And, okay, perfect. Perfect, perfect. All right. Yes, Holly's here. She, Holly McKeller, McKeller, you're here, correct?
She didn't answer.
I thought I heard her answer. I must have.
That was Emily tricking you.
Okay. Okay, so Holly, you're not here at this time, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Moving along, the first item on the agenda we have are the January 4th minutes. Are there any changes that need to be made to those minutes? If not, I will accept a motion.
So moved to accept.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion, excuse me, put me down as an abstain for that, please, since I was not here, Emily. Next item on the agenda, the February 1st, 2021 minutes. Any corrections or changes that need to be made on those minutes? If not, all accept a motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
And I abstain.
And put Art Dyson as an abstention on that one, since he wasn't here at the last meeting. All right. Moving on, we've had some discussion about having a executive session, which is a session where we go in with our legal counsel and discuss, oh, we can only discuss legal issues. If we, if any Planning and Zoning Commission members have any legal questions about any legal issues at all, that's all that we can discuss. If we do an executive session, I have to have a motion and a second and a vote to go into executive session, and we have to say about how long we'll be in the session. I've had a few members tell me they would be interested in doing that. Would anybody like to make a motion to that effect?
Just briefly, Chairman, if I may.
Yes, absolutely.
Chris Williams, counsel for the Planning and Zoning Commission. I submitted for the record for inclusion of the minutes a declaration and opinion based on discussions that this would qualify under the Open Meetings Act, Alabama Code 3625A7 subsection A3. And if you'll allow me, Chairman, just to read a brief excerpt, just for the record, to be clear. It's my understanding on the first day of March 2021, at a meeting of the regularly scheduled commission, there will be made a motion calling for an executive session to discuss with the commission's attorney the legal ramifications of and legal opinions for pending or future potential litigation pursuant to Alabama Code, and I give the code section. Prior to the commission voting to convene the executive session, I'm offering this declaration and opinion for the purposes stating that the particular code section, code of Alabama, is applicable to the planned discussion, and I do request that the written declaration and opinion be reflected in the minutes for this meeting. I'll further advise the commission that if any deliberation begins among them regarding what action to take relating to pending or threatened litigation based upon the advice of counsel, the executive session will be concluded and the deliberation shall be conducted back in the open portion of the meeting. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. Would anybody like to make a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
I move to go into executive session. This is John.
Okay, I've got a motion from John. Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Rebecca.
Okay, got a second from Rebecca then. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed, say nay. All right, in that case, we're going to go into an executive session at this time. Fifteen minutes, max.
How exactly are we going to do that?
We'll come back at, let's say, we'll come back at 5:25, ready or not. Okay. Commissioners that are joining us virtually, you have another link we prepared for in case this happened. Anyone from the public, if you'll sit tight in the virtual meeting, we'll be back in fifteen minutes. And any commissioners, please leave this meeting at this time, and we will start the other meeting in an alternate location. All right. To reconvene, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously.
Um, Lee, yeah, can you do a roll call again to make sure we got everybody back?
I can. Let me get my list here that I, so I don't forget anybody. Oh, here it is. All right, I'll go ahead and do a roll call. Rebecca, are you still here?
Yes.
Okay. Art, I see. Harry, I see you.
I'm here.
John?
Yes.
Are you here? Okay. Holly? Holly, are you back?
You know, she said she had problems getting into this.
She got to the other one.
To this one, but not the other one.
All right. Jason Langley?
Yes, sir.
I see Jimmy Conyers and Clarice, are you back?
Yes.
Okay. Emily, do you have the capability to, is that her? Somebody's waiting in the lobby. Joe, will you let that one in? Holly, was that you that just joined us? She never made it to the original meeting. Emily, do you have the ability to forward the?
I don't. Joe? Yeah, but you should be able to forward the link that I sent you.
I can't. I've tried this before.
Yeah. Right. Hold on just a second, and we will.
I can always forward.
Yeah, let's see if I can.
She says try to get the link.
Joe, do you need, Joe, do you need Holly's email, or? He cannot, I cannot either.
I can't actually send out. Hey, Hunter, this is Buford. I'm going to try to do it.
Yeah, if you'll just forward what you received from Emily, that should work.
Hey, Buford is about to send you what he sent from Emily, and we're going to go ahead and get this started, since you heard it last month, we'll go ahead and get started. All right, thanks.
Yeah, if you give her the number to call, she can call you.
He's going to just forward it. She should, she should be able to click the join.
Want to go ahead? Yeah, we'll go ahead and just start here.
There's a Joe, if you can pull the slides up for me, sir.
All right, good day.
Good evening, Commissioner. Mike Jeffrey, City Planner with the City of Fairhope. The first case we have for you tonight is SD 21.03. It's Carmel Park Flats. It's a multiple occupancy project. We had heard and had the public hearing last month, and this was tabled for further discussion. So I will go through these slides, the same slides that we saw last week, with a couple additions towards the end. If I need to go back or repeat anything, please let me know. It's a 242-unit multiple occupancy, occupancy project containing 20.24 acres at the southwest corner of the intersection of County Road 44 and Thompson Hall Road, going to be known as Carmel Park Flats. The property is unzoned Baldwin County, but is inside our planning jurisdiction and is being reviewed for the MOP. The application is for preliminary approval, and if approved, an application for a final MOP approval must be submitted to close out the project and record any necessary documents. Aerial and the zoning map on your screen showing the location of the property. This is the site plan depicting the layout of the buildings that are on the property. There are some traffic improvements shown on County Road 44 for a left-hand and a right-hand turn lane coming in. In the center of the development, there's what's labeled as a common area for a wet pond and a large green space on the bottom of the sheet. Just so you know, north is, to the left is not up and down on the page. The green space plan kind of shows you where all the open areas are going to be. There's a dog park located on the south end of the site. The landscaping plan. The height conforms to 35 feet required in our subdivision regulations for unzoned properties. Quick overview, the drainage collected on-site discharged into two proposed ponds. Pond one, the wet pond I mentioned in the middle, Pond two is a dry retention pond located on the east side of the property, and eventually discharges into the existing wooded wetland channel on the southwest corner of the property. Sewer inside the development remained private and not maintained by the City of Fairhope, and they exceed the required green space, providing 7.85 acres, which five acres is required. The entrance meets fire code with a split entry. The traffic study, the result of the study recommended a left turn lane and a four-way stop at the intersection of 44 and Booth Road. In addition to these improvements, the applicants also proposing to install a right-hand turn lane. At the time of construction, all permits will be required by the Baldwin County Highway Department. This is the additional slides that were added. So at the Planning Commission, the public hearing that we had on the February 1st meeting was tabled for further study and additional information, particularly in regard to the traffic study. The city hired a third party, Mr. Shane Bergen, a professional traffic engineer with Neil Schaefer, to review the revised traffic study requested by staff previously. The full review was included in the full staff report. In conclusion, the review, as stated by Shane, was, is my opinion that the construction of the proposed Carmel Park development will not have a significant impact to the roadway network as long as the planned improvements are constructed. If you have any questions or comments regarding this review, please call me. The staff recommendation, that's similar to last month's with the addition of one at the end, and I'll run through these. One is a letter confirming that all onsite sewer is to remain privately maintained and not the responsibility of the City of Fairhope or Baldwin County that is signed by the development owner. A note added on the recorded site plan that all sewer infrastructure within the property boundary is to remain private and not the responsibility of the City of Fairhope nor Baldwin County. The traffic improvements included westbound and eastbound turn lanes into the development from County Road 44 shall be installed before the application for final MOP approval. Condition four was a replat combining two lots. Number five is sidewalks added along the property along County Road 44. And number six is additional condition that was added. Since all traffic impact studies were predicated on two Twin Beach road improvement projects being complete or functioning prior to the proposed development generating any residential traffic, no certificates of occupancies or COs shall be issued for Carmel Park Flats MOP until such time that substantial completion is issued on the following project by the project owners. One is an ALDOT city project with the project number corresponding, adding turn lanes on County Road 44 at US 98 and upgrading the traffic signal at County Road 44 and US 98 in the City of Fairhope. And B, Baldwin County project number with a number corresponding, the intersection improvements at County Road 13 and County Road 44, which is a roundabout. And on behalf of staff, I'm happy to answer any questions. We have Mr. Rock, Mr. Richard Johnson with the City of Fairhope, and also Shane Bergen in here that did a third-party review on behalf of the city and on behalf of the developer, the engineer of record, we have Larry Smith to answer questions as well.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Let me turn my mic. Thank you very much, Mike. Larry, would you like to add anything at this time?
Unless y'all want a full presentation, again, we do have the slides here, but I think we've gone through that portion. The main things were traffic, which we do have Samantha Islam here with us.
Okay.
If y'all have any questions for her, she updated the traffic study with the questions that y'all had, and other than that, I'm just here for any additional questions that y'all might have.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, I, this is not a public hearing, so I'm not going to open the public hearing. Again, tonight, we listened for 45 minutes and pretty much heard, I think, the comments of the public at the last meeting. Richard, I see that you're here, and since you were kind enough not to bring 100 people with you in the coronavirus pandemic, I will give you five minutes if you'd like to speak, since we're going to let, we're going to, you could go now or wait till afterwards. I'm going to let the commissioners ask questions to the traffic study folks, but I will give you five minutes, since you're representing a lot of folks, and since this is kind of a strange time, the way we're, you know, been doing these meetings on, online, if you would like to add something, since we're going to, you know, be listening to the developers as well. Does anybody have any, I'd like to, Richard, if you'll go ahead and get a start on the traffic study, and I know we've got, you know, some folks in there that, Commissioners, any questions you have on the traffic study, we have the professionals here today to ask those questions.
And I just want to kind of give a short preamble, and Hunter had a very good point, and I won't say that he scolded me, but it was that sometimes we follow a process and then we don't explain the process we follow to you, so then confusion or maybe lack of confidence could be a result of that. And understand that my role, as I see it, is that, one, we have development standards, and depending what type of development is, there's certain standards that apply. And whoever is the planning tech that has assigned that case will bring certain technical things that may relate to engineering, such as drainage, or in this case, transportation impacts, to me, and we'll discuss, I'll look at it and everything else. And I do want to state that you're going to hear it, because you have two professional engineers that are also traffic engineers. That's what the primary amount of their business, so that they're much more qualified. I'm a professional engineer, but I'm kind of a jack-of-all-trades and master of none. But I use traffic studies on a regular basis. So the question in what we do in the review process is, first of all, the assumption is that if a development's going to occur, and that's what's happening here, somebody's proposing to take a piece of property and change the use that is going to have impacts, whether it be drainage or utilities or traffic, and our job is to look at the data that they perform and ask the question, have they met the standard and have they mitigated to the best of their ability that impact to whatever it is, whether it's drainage or whether it's infrastructure-related utilities, or in this case, our road system. And I will tell you from the get-go, we as a city and we as a county already knew that there were some challenges on Twin Beach, thus the reason that this month, the project with an ATRIP-2 grant is letting for turn lanes additions to Twin Beach and 98, as well as signal upgrades. The county, with support of the city, has pursued a highway safety improvement project to put a roundabout at the intersection of Twin Beach and 13. The city is, already made some small pedestrian improvements at Booth and Twin Beach and are looking at options there. The four-way stop is not a good option, because the majority of the traffic is on Twin Beach traveling east to west, and a four-way stop treats everyone equally, so thus, you're going to maybe improve the level of service on the lesser streets up, but you're going to bring the majority down to a poor level of service. So looking at an option for a signal that provides a protective left turn lane during the peak hours and then goes to a normal signal operation and non-peak with pursuing NPO funding, that's looking, looking at the direction we're going. So understand, if we weren't discussing this development today, there are some mitigation efforts that we're already known about that are, that are moving forward. With that said, then the question, as an engineer and as a representative of you in this city, what can the developer do to then mitigate beyond what is being done today to ensure that their development lesses, lessens the impact to the best of ability? Short of, you know, the ultimate mitigation is don't ever develop anything, meaning that we only allow one house building on that property, because even one house will impact traffic, there's no doubt. It's cumulative, okay? And every time a new development, even outside our normal area, that feeds into our school pattern, affects our traffic. Every time we get better as a city and open a new restaurant and do better community events that people from other parts of the county come into, that affects our traffic. So understand, it's a cumulative thing. In this case, when we reviewed the traffic study, we, one, had some issues, and we asked for them to revisit a little broader spectrum, a little bit more of the corridor, which they did. And again, within the contents of the study, and I can tell you, every traffic engineer is going to approach the study a different way. They may set parameters up slightly different, but again, you're looking for the ultimate, what is the conclusion? What is, what is the recommendation? And even though in this study, we had a left turn lane was recommended but not warranted, and a right turn lane was not recommended nor warranted, but the default was, we are willing or we are proposing to put both those elements in, which would guarantee the throughput traffic on Twin Beach would have a minimum effect, meaning that no one's having to get on the brakes while somebody's slowing down to turn right, because that car can move over into their own auxiliary lane and make that, that right-hand turn movement. For those cars that are trying to turn left, there's no one having to come to a stop, that throughput stays there. So with that said, the conclusion that we got to, I got to, as representing you, is that this developer and his, in his development, has done everything that they can, short of not developing the property, to mitigate the traffic. And we can get into whether is the peak hour this time or that time, but at the end of the day, when you, when you get to the conclusion, even though, in my example to Hunter earlier today, was if, if the Planning Commission says make us chocolate cake, and one person uses two eggs, and one person uses three eggs, and both cakes are a chocolate cake that's edible and tasty, yeah, we could debate that, well, he used two eggs and he, this one used three eggs, but is the outcome meeting the intent of our subdivision regulations or regulations applicable to mitigate that impact? And in my opinion, that was, that was made, and this is not saying I'm a fan of this development, or I think that should be this or that, but the bottom line, we just look at what's put before us, and did they meet the standard of care to do everything they could mitigate? Now, with that said, the conclusion that we came to is that the transportation, the traffic engineer was allowed to consider the roundabout and the improvements at Greeno Road and US, and Twin Beach. Well, that's why you saw that additional statement. If we are going to allow them to use those improvements that physically haven't occurred to show their impact to traffic, then they can't impact traffic until those improvements are made. So that's why we added that condition, which is fair. If they get to calculate those improvements in their study like they're there, then they don't get to impact traffic until those improvements are made. And that is a, that's a decision the developer's going to have to make, if they can live with that. Now, here's the thing, we are already scheduled to let this month for the project on Greeno, and I know that the highway, Baldwin County Highway Department's already acquired right away for the roundabout, they had the design done, and I think their goal was to possibly be funded in the next fiscal year, which starts October 1, 2021, which means construction's probably going to occur simultaneously with the development of this property, but that, that's neither here or there, but that is our recommendation. So that's just what I want to say, is that we don't take these studies lightly. If we did take them lightly, we wouldn't have asked for additional information and additional study areas. You know, if there is a critique or a complaint that I have, is that our regulation says that really before you undertake the study, you should sit down with staff and let's talk about all the parameters we need to make sure we covered, because that avoids getting a report and then going, well, we need X, Y, and Z to go along with it, which happened in this case. But that's all I wanted to say, and I'll be glad to answer any, any questions. And understand, when I looked at numbers or conclusions, I also participated in a traffic study on Twin Beach at Greeno that included the east and west side approaches in 2019. So I had data, then I knew the growth rate, and when I see an engineer say, I'm going to use a 4.5% growth rate, and I know what the real growth rate is, it's about 2.65, okay? So I never get mad when engineers conservative, when they, when they, when they use a bigger number than they have to, just to be on the safe side. And the numbers that I had in my personal history of doing a traffic study in cooperation with ALDOT is I knew what the traffic was on Twin Beach on, on the east side of, and I know what the growth rate is, and when I saw the numbers that this particular study did, it aligned very closely with what I would have predicted those numbers to be. So we can talk about COVID or whatever, but if we have pre-COVID numbers, okay, and, and we have a growth rate that's pretty accurate, and I'm, you know, we track that here, we kind of know how fast we're growing, we know how many building permits we're issuing, and schools know how fast they're growing, everything else. So with that said, I just wanted to reassure you that this is not something that was taken lightly. Can we pull one or two numbers out of a 73-page report and discuss them at no end? Yes, we can. But ultimately, we look at what the conclusion is to mitigate, and I can't, as an engineer, other than saying, don't develop the property, or only develop it with eight lots, which is not my call, is based upon what is proposed, did they meet the standard and the intent or regulations to, at the best of their possible, to mitigate the impact to traffic? And that's what the purpose of the study is, and it is my humble opinion that they have. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the city engineer, Richard Johnson, at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
We've got two of the traffic engineers in attendance. Are there any questions for the traffic engineers at this time? Richard, would you like to have five minutes now?
Good evening, Commissioner, and I'll be brief. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. I represent the Fairhope Quality of Life, and I know y'all heard from me last time. Sticking with the other Richard Johnson's analogy, at the last meeting, this commission didn't ask for another chef to review a different chef's recipe. Y'all wanted a new chef to make a new cake, and that's what y'all passed in your motion, and I saw the slide, the new slide that was added, and with all due respect, I don't think that reflects exactly what the motion was at the last meeting, and I'll read it. This is my best of transcribing it from the video, that a motion was made that the vote on approving the Carmel Flat Apartments be tabled so that a traffic study could be done at true peak hours to and from school, and that the city approve the actual engineer that will do that study. To me, that takes it as y'all are getting a new engineer to do a new study of that area during true peak hours, morning and afternoon during the school, and I think there was a lot of discussion at that at the last meeting. And that, that motion passed unanimously. Rather than do that, it looks like y'all hired Mr. Bergen to just simply review. Rather than do that, it looks like y'all hired Mr. Bergen to just simply review the developer's revised traffic study. I've got a copy of that now here, and in the second page of that report, the bottom paragraph, I hadn't seen this, anything I'd reviewed from the city, but he makes a note here that a comment from the city requested that new data be collected during a 72-hour window when schools are in full in-person session. Said the response indicated additional data was collected as per recommendations in the comment. New data was collected December 16th. Data was collected two days prior to Christmas break, and might have been lower, as some high school students do not have to attend if they have completed their finals. And I think we talked about that last time. We couldn't find conclusive data on that, but the administration had told us, attendance, based on what they know at middle school and high school, is probably 50% less on that second day they went out and collected data. Mr. Bergen goes on to say, though, also, "The appendix only provides one hour of data in the morning and afternoon." And as we sit here today and the agenda for this meeting, that's still all we have. I mean, there's nothing new in this agenda tonight. The appendix to the revised study still just shows two hours of data collected from 8:30 to 9:30, and again, from 2:30 to 3:30. That's all we have, and I don't know if they've supplemented it, it's just not here, but that's all we have to go on right now. Mr. Bergen goes on to say that if 72 hours of data was collected, it should have been provided in the appendix, and it's not here. So that's, the commission has now asked for a new study to be done and to collect data during that true peak hours of morning and afternoon during school traffic. And then it looks like the city at some point did as well, and as we sit here today, that's never been done. It's never, they never complied with the commission's request, and they've never complied with the city's request to get a true peak hour study done. And we think this is too important of a decision for the residents in this area not to do, for lack of a better term, what you said you were going to do. And it passed, the motion passed, it was unanimous, and as we sit here today, it's never been done. So we just asked that you do that and get a true study done during those peak hours. 8:30 to 9:30 is not the peak morning hour. I think we talked about that last time, a lot of discussion. It's probably the true peak hours from 7:00 to 8:15, 7:15 to 8:15, something along those lines. And we just asked that that be done. I'll also point out one other thing about this review of the study that was done before I sat down, and it looks like on the Booth Road, and I think Mr. Johnson spoke about that, but they've got it in here now as a level of service of E. And if you look at the data on a level of service of E, that is high level of driver frustration and high levels of delay. And I believe in the developer's engineer's study, in that study, it even says that only D and above, which would be A through C and D and above, are acceptable levels of service. E doesn't cut it. That's in the developer's engineer's study, it states that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's the engineer from Neil Schaefer here. Could you come up for just a second? And the motion, there was discussion, and the final motion was to have a new traffic study, or the current traffic study reviewed by someone else, because the timeframe within the time that we can postpone wouldn't necessarily work, plus we don't have the ability to hire somebody who's a planning and zoning commission we can't hire. So...
Lee, would you like me to elaborate that process?
Yes, please.
And what staff did? Shane, if you'll give me just a second. I like that, because we did look at a lot of minutes and go back and look at video and exactly how that motion, and it was confirmed, a review would be sufficient. And what we had to look at is what we can actually get done in 30 days, because if the planning commission does not make a decision tonight, then the project is approved, unless the applicant was willing to further study. But that's a decision that you don't know, nor do we know. So what can we accomplish in 30 days? And a full traffic study would have required a much larger budget for funding that was not currently approved. We would not have been able to get that on a city council agenda until next Monday, to even ask for the funding, much less do the work. So we could not come empty-handed. So that is why the staff went after, with Neil Schaefer's, to see if we can do a traffic study, a review of the amended traffic study. And even then, that was cutting some tight deadlines to get that in your hands and done in that timeframe. So of course, if you have any questions about those traffic studies, both traffic engineers are here and can answer those.
And just for clarity of the record, Chairman, if I may, just very briefly adding on to that, the minutes and also the video was reviewed from the last meeting, and Mr. Johnson did correctly read the initial motion as phrased by Clarice, and then you made a comment to clarify that, and she agreed with that, revising her original text of her original motion, which is what carried unanimously, just for clarity of the record.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to ask you, if you could go over the, you know, looking at the traffic study, just kind of your thoughts on it and the traffic level, and how much impact, you know, this will have. And one question is, without the traffic circle there, does that just change everything since the traffic study was done, including the traffic circle on County Road 13 at Twin Beach Road?
Okay. Yes, I mean, I'm Shane Bergen with Neil Schaefer. I guess, as you heard, the city had hired us to do a review of the study, and all we did was look at the revised study, since there were so much changes made between the original and the revised, there was just more information provided. And so some of that we looked into when we did a review of like the background and the existing conditions that, you know, we did notice about some of the, you know, the peak hours could be off, depends on if you pulled ALDOT data. ALDOT data shows the morning peak occurring between 7:00 and 8:00. Now, I will just have to say that their data is only on the hour, so you don't get a 15-minute drop like you could yourself. And it shows that those traffic volumes kind of are almost double in that peak hour than what they are from like an 8:00 to a 9:00 period. So just real quick, I actually went in and did an analysis of Twin Beach and County Road 13 just doubling the through volumes on Twin Beach, and came back with still acceptable levels of service at that intersection. Now, they get, obviously get a little bit worse, but it's still in like the level of service C. Now, with, you know, a roundabout that does improve to an A, just because cars aren't having to stop, you know, that if you're there on a four-lane road, you have to stop no matter if there's a car in front of you or not, while the roundabout, you're allowed to continue through with just the yield. So then we, you know, also looked at the trip generation and trip distribution, and one thing, you know, you could always argue, or a couple percentages here or there, just on your thoughts, but overall, that only changes, you know, the results, I would say, like a car or two is getting added to those approaches. We looked at the review of the site-related impacts, and, you know, one thing we, one thing I noticed in the report was there wasn't a review of the driveway, where the driveway's actually connecting to Twin Beach. But I went back and actually did a quick analysis of that driveway, and the driveway works with acceptable levels of service. Obviously, Twin Beach actually operates as an A, because it doesn't have to stop at all. And then, you know, so any delay you have is actually on the developer's side, and so it's still operating, I think, as a B and a C, but that's on the developer's side, not on the city road. And then I know that there were some comments about, came in with some of the comments that were given by the city or the county, and, you know, really, the, I hate to say, the big conclusion with all of it is, to me, is in 2019, ALDOT County, Twin Beach, and it had 4,400 cars a day was on Twin Beach. And for a two-lane roadway, the capacity of a two-lane roadway usually ends up being about 14,000 vehicles a day. So there's a lot of growth left that could occur on Twin Beach. Now, where, you know, where do you have your issues on a roadway, and that's where you have to come to a stop. So at 181 in Twin Beach, there's already turn lanes all the way around and a traffic signal. So unless 181's widened, or Twin Beach is widened, it's at its max capacity that it could have. And then with the inclusion of the roundabout, that a roundabout can act, a single-lane roundabout can handle about 25,000 vehicles a day. So, you know, that's all around, so that would be 13 included, and so that's going to far exceed the capacity of the actual roadways coming into it at the time. And then the inclusion of the turn lanes at 98, that that's going to boost the capacity at 98 and at Twin Beach than where it sits today. So I guess in all, it was, you know, we can talk about a few percentages here or there with COVID, or, you know, I'd say a couple hundred cars during the peak hour, but all the improvements that are going to go in are adding thousands of cars of capacity to the system as it sits today.
What about without the roundabout?
Without the roundabout? I think it's going to be, without the roundabout, you're going to see probably a C or a D. I didn't print it to put it in the report, but it's a level of service probably C for the intersection.
So for clarification, we've got running north and south on Booth, a level of service E. East-west on Twin Beach, you've got a level of service A. To construct the complex, without a roundabout would drop Twin Beach to a C or D, but a roundabout would bring that back to an A? But what about the north-south on?
No, that's a different intersection. I was talking about 13 and Twin Beach, but in my letter, yes, Booth, Booth and Twin Beach, with Booth just being a two-way stop currently, that the revised report showed an approach level of service E, and obviously, Twin Beach is an A, because Twin Beach doesn't have to stop unless somebody's turning left onto Booth. Now, with, I think their study recommended a four-way stop, and if you made it a four-way stop, you're able to improve Booth from an E to like a C, but then at the same time, you end up dropping...
More on Twin Beach.
You're dropping Twin Beach, because you're making every car come to a stop. So I put in my letter that, you know, I recommended that the city look at that issue a little bit harder, that based on the volumes that are in the report, you're not going to meet the requirements in the manual and uniform traffic control devices, or the MUTCD that you're supposed to follow to put up signals and signs and stuff. What I'm not aware of is the crash history at the intersection. If there's enough crashes in a 12-year period that could be correctable, then you can put up a four-way stop.
Any more questions, commissioners? Anybody, any commissioners have any questions who are online?
I had some questions in that Table 8, you know, we're all referring to with the different levels of service at the different intersections, where it looks like the areas where it's, where we're really degrading the level of service with Carmel Park Flats is at Twin Beach and 98. Here it goes, well, from a C to a D. And how is that being addressed, or? I'd like to hear some more thoughts on that.
Richard?
Since I think you're asking questions on the revised study, so I'll let Dr. Islam come up and speak to her report.
Okay. And just to, I guess my question is, because following the table, there's a statement that the summary of the results are presented in the table, blah, blah, blah. The results show that all the intersections will experience overall levels of service of C or better, but then when I look at it, I see these Ds. So that's what I was curious about, and the Ds are at the intersection of Twin Beach and 181, but then they're also at Twin Beach and 98. So, well, and Twin Beach and Booth Road, actually, in the afternoon.
Now, before I start, I want to bring to your attention, there is another revised report, in that we are proposing, instead of a four-way stop controlled intersection, we are proposing a signal, or should be looked at, at the intersection of Booth Road and Twin Beach Road. That's the latest report. And I, after I'm done addressing your question on the level of service for Table, from Table 8, which is now Table 9, I can answer the question on your peak hour count and why we did just the peak hour counts, not the three-day count, so maybe I can address that a little later.
Sure.
So can you please tell me one more time your question on?
I guess the first thing is, I thought there was a conflict, and maybe I'm looking at that superseded report, I'm looking at Page 14 and 15.
Okay, since the report, maybe you are looking at a different report, so if you please specifically tell me what you are asking, then I can answer your question.
Do you have any to pull that up?
Well, part of it is, I wanted you to explain the conflict, where the summary of the report says that there's, all the intersections will experience level, overall levels of service are C or better.
Mm-hmm.
But then when I read the table, I see levels of service of D.
So which, in your original, it was Table 8, and now Table 9?
Now, it's the Table 9, yes.
And you just reviewed, and there...
Because the, some of the levels of service have changed, because we included two new developments as part of this study, so that's why the numbers are a little different in the new report. So I think if you look at Table 9, which is the updated Table 8 in the previous version.
Okay. Then the Ds go away, is what you're saying?
We have some Ds.
And Rebecca, this is Hunter. I'm looking at the table now of the revised. I don't think there are any new Ds, so both the statement is true on each of those. With or without Carmel Park, those situations are a level D?
Well, so on Page 14, the intersection of Twin Beach and 98, without Carmel Park, it's a C, with Carmel Park, it's a D. Westbound intersection of Twin Beach and 98. And again, forgive me if I'm, there's a lot of papers here, and maybe I've, maybe this is the old one, but I'm reading...
You are reading?
This Table 8, and then the summary of Table 8, and I was just...
Yes.
It didn't seem to jump.
We received the revised, after staff reports were created, you are looking at the revised, or you're looking at the older version of the revised traffic report. So there is a third revision of the original traffic study?
Correct. So just so everybody, this is Mike with the City of Fairhope. So just so everybody is aware of all the traffic reports and information that has occurred, the city received an initial traffic report, requested a revised traffic report, hired Neil Schaefer to do a study, and after that time, the city received an additional revised report from the applicant. So those are all the reports that we have. The final revised report was received after the staff reports had been finished and sent out, and it was not included in the packet. So you have not seen the latest revised that was submitted at the end of last week.
And Rebecca, which intersection exactly? Westbound on which intersection?
I think she was talking about Twin Beach and 98.
Twin Beach and Greeno is what she said. Okay. Twin Beach and Greeno is what you said, right, Rebecca?
Westbound is, in the revised, it's a D across the board. So there's no change from a C to D in the revised table, which I'm looking at, but we do not have, or we can pull up on the screen.
Rebecca, are you still there?
And I just want to clarify...
Can you...
Now we can, Rebecca.
Okay. Spontaneously muted. What about the northbound in the revised report? Northbound morning intersection of Twin Beach and NuS 98. Does it, in the old report, it went from B to a C?
That is still the case.
Okay.
While she's looking at, I just want to clarify why there was a revision. Y'all, it also, at the last meeting, requested us to add two additional developments into the traffic study, and also to check on the times of the traffic study, which those have been updated to reflect the hours when school was in session. It was just a typo on the last report. It was just a typo on the last report, so that, that's why we're referring to this additional report.
Okay, I just didn't realize that we didn't have it.
And the three-day count, we could not have that three-day count, because it was already sixteenth of December, and typically, three-day count would go from Tuesday to Thursday. And this was a count on Wednesday, so if I had a three-day count, it would go all the way until Friday, and we don't want to get a traffic count on a Friday. I think I wa, I got, I was asked to do the revised, more counts on the fourteenth, so by the time I could get everything put together and go out in the field, sixteenth was the earliest time I could go, and then I made sure we could get the counts during the peak hours. Now, with that peak hours, since you were asking why we did from seven-thirty till eight-thirty, not seven-fifteen, what we did, we started counting at seven-fifteen, and then since we give block counts for hours in fifteen-minute blocks, so we started at seven-fifteen, went all the way until eight-thirty, and picked the highest hour count. So our highest hour count, including those fifteen-minute blocks, went from seven-thirty to eight-thirty that day. So that's why instead of seven-fifteen to eight-fifteen, we did seven-thirty to eight-thirty.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody have a copy? I didn't know there was a, you know, copy of that.
I, I didn't know we got a letter going to ask this.
Yeah.
It's first up here. A literally test on that we got.
Okay, we'll send, we'll get that sent out. Any other questions, while our traffic engineer is here? All right, thank you very much, ma'am. All right, commissioners? All accept a motion at this time?
This is John. I move we accept, we, we approve with all staff recommendations.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve with all staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Our attorney has a comment, this is Chris Williams.
Just if we vote, will you do a roll call vote for this one, please?
Yes, sir, I will. All right, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. I'll ask one more time if there's any further discussion. If not, I am going to start the roll call vote. Rebecca, yes or no, to approve or disapprove the, the motion?
Did you say Rebecca?
Yes, Rebecca.
I'm sorry, you're completely breaking up.
Rebecca, do you vote, yea or nay?
I vote to approve, yea.
All right. Art?
Yea.
Harry?
Yea.
John?
Yea.
Jason?
Yes.
Clouse?
Yes.
Jimmy?
I'm yea.
And I'm yea also, I think that's everybody, is that not correct, Emily?
What about me?
Holly came in late, I'm sorry, Holly.
It's Holly.
Holly, your vote, I'm sorry.
Did you leave me out?
Yeah, I, I wrote the names right at the beginning when we started, and I apologize for that.
Yea.
And Holly is yea, not last, I'm just jealous that you went on your trip after I saw the Facebook photos, so sorry about that, I was trying to leave you out.
Yeah.
No, seriousness, I'm sorry.
I know, my count doesn't matter.
No, I wrote the numbers right as soon as we got here, so I apologize for that in seriousness, excuse me. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is SD twenty-one point oh-six, the public hearing to consider the request of TH Fairhope Falls two thousand and eighteen LLC for final plat approval of Fairhope Falls Phase Three. Jeff, Mike Reese?
Yes, sir. So Mr. Turner Lee, what we have tonight is SD twenty-one point zero-six, it's Fairhope Falls Phase Three. The owner and applicant is TH Fairhope Falls two thousand and eighteen LLC. Dewberry is the authorized agent and engineer of record for the project. This is a final plat application for a thirty-three lot subdivision located on the south side of Highway one oh-four and west of Yosemite Boulevard. It will connect to the existing Fairhope Falls subdivision Phases One and Two. The property is currently unzoned, but does have an approved village subdivision and a preliminary plat that it has to be built in substantial conformance to. The preliminary plat approval was January third, two thousand and seventeen, along with the preliminary approval of Phase Two, which has already received the final plat approval. On the screen, highlighted in blue, is the parcel being approved tonight. As I said, it's unzoned, so there are no zoning colors on the left side, and the aerial on the right side. Quick glimpse of what the plat is, the thirty-three lots, again, it's connecting to the existing phases of Fairhope Falls One on the east side or right side of the screen, and Fairhope Falls Two on the south side, bottom side of the screen. Baldwin County has provided correspondence and noted that there were no deficiencies. As a note, final plat must be recorded within sixty days after the date of final approval. Staff has held this off from its initial application date for some stormwater investigation. The stormwater system for Phase Three was designed to function with the existing stormwater system of Phases One and Two. The first phases constructed were designed and built to capture, treat, and release the stormwater from the undeveloped portions, as well as the same portions once developed. Staff required a full inspection of the stormwater system, and the stat, that inspection report was included in the packet. In general, the report states that maintenance is needed, but overall, the system is functioning as designed. Several items have been corrected, as shown in the report, and due to weather, there are a few items that were not able to be corrected, and remaining work is captured as a condition of approval. For our maintenance agreements, and our O and M and performance bonds, this fall list of follow-up activities is required by the applicant, and this is included for their information and to help this in the future for reference. Staff recommends approval of SD twenty-one point zero-six, Fairhope Falls Phase Three, final plat with the following conditions. One, that the deficiencies listed in the stormwater inspection report dated February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one are corrected and approved by the City of Fairhope's Public Works Director, before the city will sign the final plat for recording and complete the above-mentioned I'd follow-up activities. I will note that the majority of the work, Andy Bobey with Dewberry is the engineer of record, and speaking with him, most of the deficiency have already been corrected. I believe that there was still one pond that needed sediment removed from that, but most of those items have been corrected. I visited the site at the end of last week, and saw that a lot of work had been done, and the city, this was a development, for people that don't know, that it sat dormant for a while, came back to life, and with the stormwater systems working in unison with each other, wanted to make sure everything was functioning properly before future development occurred. Be happy to answer any questions on behalf of staff, and I believe I saw that Mr. Andy Bobey is with us virtually online to answer any questions on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Yeah, this is John, I just, it may just be a procedural thing, but on the Dewberry
report and the, well, the stormwater maintenance agreement for Phases One through Three has a three-year inspection time. The Dewberry report says five, and also the subsequent things we're gonna be looking at after this have a five-year time period. Which, which is it?
So for the, the O and M agreement, that is going to conform with our new subdivision, with the latest subdivision regulations, which is a inspection after the third year, and sequentially every fifth year after that.
Okay, okay. That's fine, that answers the question.
Thank you, John. Can you pull it up where we can see Andy Bobey on here? Or the?
Bobey.
Joe, can you pull it up where we can see the gallery, in case for when Mr. Bobey wants to speak? Just the people in the, who are in the virtual audience? Just since Andy Bobey's about to speak, I just wanted to see if we could see him.
I can.
And I'm, I am here. We did get notice that the?
Perfect, thank you so much, Joe. Yes, sir, you can go ahead.
Sorry, we did get notice that the work was completed. We were unable to complete an inspection today due to rain. Potential as rain may hinder that as well tomorrow, but we're gonna make effort to get that inspection done tomorrow in the gaps between the rain, trying to get that report submitted tomorrow or potentially Wednesday. Other than that, we, we have a couple other outstanding items that were mentioned, that we'll get the report, the O and M plan recorded and submitted with the plat. Now, I'm not sure if there are any other questions that staff or the commission have, but I'll try and answer those at this time.
Okay, Andy, are there any questions for Andy at this time? If not, Andy, if you'll stay close, I'm gonna open the public hearing now.
Okay.
And might bring up some questions. I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time, this is for SD twenty-one point oh-six, this is Fairhope Falls Phase Number Three. Would anybody wish to speak to this item?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to state for the record that we did receive a couple calls, but the residents said that staff answered all of their questions sufficiently.
Okay. All right, in that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Andy, I've got one question or a comment. Normally, I was talking to Mike earlier about the schedule and the timeframe, and just one thing that I wanna throw out for you to mention to your developers, is in the past, we normally, well, our regulation states that when you get a preliminary plat approval, you've got two years to come back for the final plat approval. Normally, in the past, we have given, if infrastructure has started being worked on, we give two one-year extensions, and if infrastructure's not, we normally give an extension if no subdivision regulations have changed. So y'all, you know, basically have your, your, you know, village subdivision or, you know, concept out there, but just, I think you might wanna let the owners understand that, you know, we, we don't have the ability to give a, you know, eight or ten-year approval on this. So, you know, if this thing comes and, and no work is done for five or six years, in other words, you know, you probably would have to come back for another, you know, preliminary plat approval.
Yes, sir.
Does that make sense to you?
It, it does. I'm not sure, is, is that in relation to the Phase One?
No, just this phase.
Phase Two and Three being approved together?
I'm just saying, just basically in general, to any phase being approved, I'm just saying if, if, you know, if you get an approval and then nothing happens for ten years, you know, I'm just saying, you know, you don't expect to get a, you know, an extension for a year for a decade.
Final, okay.
Well, the ticket there would be, if we're gonna give them a two-year period, and then you can approve, what, two one-year extensions? Is that right?
That's what we have done, I don't think that it's in writing, but that's the precedent that we have done.
Well, we're talking about final plats, right?
One of the, one of the issues has to do with changing in subdivision regulations as you go forward into years to come, and just because somebody has a preliminary plat approval, it never does anything, and I think we've talked, Hunter and I have talked about this, and I'm assuming everybody else probably has thought about this too, that there's gonna come a time when the subdivision regulations that were in place at the time preliminary plat was approved, are not gonna be what they will be, what they'll have to adhere to when they begin their development. Will be an issue, but as long as everybody understands what the game is, I think it works out all right.
Does that make sense to you, Andy?
It, it does.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Chairman, this is Hunter. I know the, that is exactly what the history's happened with final plat. It's, I think the question becomes a preliminary plat, which might tie into the other two cases, where there's an extension on those, just like final plat. So on this one, I think we're, we're very clear, and this one is, yeah, this one's built.
Oh, okay, okay, excuse me, it was the other ones I wa, I just wanted to mention that.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to put that on the record, not the, excuse me, I went out of turn on that, but Andy understands it, thanks for not making me sound stupid, Andy.
No, no problem.
It doesn't take much, it doesn't take much.
Sorry, that's what I was thinking, we were, the one at present was for final.
Yeah, no, you're right, I was talking about for the preliminary plats.
The next two, I guess.
This is a, they have sixty days to record the final plat.
Right.
And may, if granted by the commission.
I have my notes here, Andy, I have my notes on SD twenty-one point oh-two, but I skipped them up over the top, so they were in my column here, a little one, one too premature.
No worries, no worries.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions or concerns? If not, all entertain a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, for SD twenty-one point zero-six, Fairhope Falls, Phase Three, this is a move that we approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second. I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, I'll not call a roll call, since it was unanimous. Moving on to the next agenda, SD twenty-one point one-two, public hearing to consider the request of Leonard and Sharon Smart, TH Fairhope Falls LLC. This is a preliminary plat approval of Phase Six, a seventy-lot subdivision. All right, Mike?
Good evening again. So we're getting the slides back up on the screen. As you said, this is for Fairhope Falls Phase Six and Phase Seven. Last month, we saw Fairhope Falls Phase Four and Five, those preliminary plats were approved. This is, these two, I'm trying to think of the location, is the southern portion of the overall development, and we'll have it on the screen in just a second. The continuation of these phases will prevent, will show an outline of the neighborhood, leaving the infill to be left filled in from it. One second. So up on the screen, on the left and the right, and Fairhope Falls Six and Seven are gonna look very similar, and they're gonna look very similar to Phases Four and Five. These are the outlines of the parcels that are part of the subdivision currently. On the left is your zoning map, it's unzoned, Baldwin County as well. On the right, you can see that the majority of the property is a currently farmed field. Again, the owner and applicant are Fairhope Falls Owners, Fairhope Falls Owners Association, TH Fairhope Falls two thousand and eighteen, and Leonard and Sharon Smart. Dewberry is the authorized agent. This is a seventy-lot subdivision on the east side of Langford Road, just north of Dressage Way. It will connect to a stubout on Yosemite Boulevard, and the approved preliminary plat for Fairhope Falls Phase Four. It does have the village subdivision that was approved in November of two thousand and twenty. The village plat is on the screen now, outlined in red is the Phase Six. As you can see, it connects to what will be Phase Four, and it also has a connection to Langford Road. This will make the second connection to Langford Road, the first one being in Phase Four. The plat on the screen reflects the same setbacks that Phase Four and Five currently have in what was approved with the village plan. Did not receive any comments from Baldwin County at this time. The drainage has been reviewed and approved by the City of Fairhope's Public Works Director. The drainage for Phases Four through Nine will utilize three detention ponds that will discharge through concrete where outfall structures to the immediate pond downstream, eventually into a still-in basin, before sheet flooring into the existing wetlands. The pond, as wet basins, will achieve the eighty percent TSS removal. Wetland buffer signs must be in place prior to any land disturbance activities, and the proposed lot sizes and layout is consistent with the approved village subdivision, and they have a minimum lot size of eighty-four hundred square feet. The amenities for Phase Six is labeled K, same as in the recently approved Phase Five. There's also a landscape buffer, which will have a six-foot tall fence and evergreen hedge along Langford Road. The traffic study was provided for the preliminary approval for, that encompassed all the Phases Four through Nine, and recommended the improvements at the intersection of Langford Road and State Road one oh-four be widened to accommodate the northbound left turn lane, an eastbound right turn lane, and a westbound left turn lane, and that shall be installed before application for final plat. This was the illustration for the- This was the illustration for the amenities and the amenity plan located on the left, showing what will be there, a open space park with benches, and the evergreen hedge on Langford Road. This was the traffic study I just said in words, but with a picture of the widening. The phasing schedule that we received initially for these phases is on the screen. This is not quite in line with where we are today. Phase Four and Five, as I said, we've already received preliminary approval. Phases Six and Seven, they had predicted scheduling starting of 2022 and finishing Phase Seven in 2023. Phase Eight and Nine, you see the schedule below there as well. I think this may have been where you were leading into on the two-year expiration of preliminary plats, that there is no guarantee that a preliminary plat will be extended or that is a guarantee that it'll be granted for extension. A couple of notes, that the installation of sidewalks and street trees are required before final plat. Note the approved preliminary plat expires after two years, and that if approved, a pre-construction meeting is required before land disturbance. Their rest staff recommendation is approval with the following conditions: a replat satisfying condition one of the approval for case S D twenty-point four-seven, which was the Fairhope Falls West Village subdivision. So that has been approved, and a replat to have the lot lines occur correctly is still needed. The recommended traffic improvements, as stated in the staff report, are installed prior to acceptance of application for final plat, and any deviation will require reapproval from the planning commission. Condition three, the amenities are installed prior to acceptance of application for final plat, and a couple of housekeeping items. Four and Five is add the City of Fairhope Gas Signature Block to the plat, and add a 15-foot utility easement along the front lot lines, periphery area utilities, to the general notes on the plat. On behalf of staff, we have to answer any questions that you may have, and I believe Representative for Dewberry, maybe Casey Hill, is with us tonight to answer questions on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff at this time? If not, who do you say is presenting for Dewberry?
I believe maybe Casey Hill, she was the, she was listed on the application.
Okay. Casey, are you out there with us tonight?
Possibly.
Yeah, I can answer.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you. Do you have anything to add at this time?
No, just that the Phase Six and the Phase Seven that you will see next are in compliance with the approved village subdivision, and we've got Truith Brennan on the call, who's the project manager, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Casey. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, and if you'll stay close, then we'll see if we have any questions for you after the public hearing, if that's all right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? This is Phase Six of Fairhope Falls, out near Highway 104 and Langford Road.
I'm John Avant, Mater Core Development, representing the developer. Just want to make a clarification of why, the method of madness, why we are submitting all these plats and preliminary plats, even though we may not start within two years, and hopefully, once we come back for a request for the extension, for a extension that it would be granted. But the reason we're doing this is because, in order for us to close on the property, we have to get everything entitled, and then what that counts for is preliminary plat, to have everything entitled, because next month, what you're going to see is Phases Eight and Nine, so I think Mr. Conyer can attest to, you know, it's hard to get a loan when you don't have everything entitled on a project this size. So that's the reason, I just wanted to clarify why we're doing this.
Sure, and I understand that, and it's, I just wanted to be, you know, transparent on the front end on our side. I mean, really, in a lot of ways, it's nice that these come out sometimes, it's almost like peeling an onion on some of these, and it's nice having the, you know, a plan out there, and generally, just, you know, there aren't a lot of significant changes, you know, water calculations here or there, but nothing overly significant, but just wanted to throw that out.
And we're totally aware of that, so thank you so much.
Thank you, yes, sir. Anybody else from the public wish to speak to this item at this time? In that case, I'll turn the meeting over to the commissioners.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, S D twenty-one point one-two, Fairhope Falls, Phase Six preliminary plat, a move that we approve, subject to staff recommendations.
I've got a motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations, and is that second from John?
Yes, it is.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Mike, do you have anything? You pretty much covered Phase Seven earlier, do you have anything to add to that?
Phase Seven, the only difference with Phase Seven is there will be some additional, different amenities for Phase Seven, and I have that on the slide right now, is that it has the playground and recreational area is a amenity that was included in this phase. The traffic study, everything else was, was the same for this phase as well. The conditions were the same as well.
All right, thank you, Mike. Casey, do you have anything to add at this time?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
No, I do not. Just like I said, it's Phase Six, it's in compliance with the village subdivision, we're just requesting preliminary plat approval.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, in that case, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for Fairhope Falls, Phase Seven. Would anybody wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners?
Make a motion, we approve S D twenty-one thirteen.
I've got a motion to approve, is that subject to staff recommendations?
Yes.
Subject to staff recommendations?
I'm sorry.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Was that, was that John again?
I was Harry.
Okay. All right, I have a second with Harry, perfect. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, discussion regarding the request of the City of Fairhope Planning and Zoning Department to accept a resolution 2021-oh-two for proposed amendment to Article Four Procedure for Plat Approval. And will that be Buford?
That'll be Hunter, all right. So we have, and staff have been, as you'll see on the screen, there's a state subdivision discussion, and this has been ongoing for about a year. This is our version of a family subdivision. There's regulations around the county, and I think some confusion, and some things happened in the last couple of months that has derailed even the conversation further. For those that don't know, there is a bill currently that has passed the Senate in the state of Alabama, and is in the House, has been sent to a subcommittee, that depending on what comes out of that, could drastically change our E T Js, could reduce, remove those from the state, and that's the way the bill is currently proposed. So that would remove planning jurisdictions, police jurisdictions. So, you know, until we find out what that status of those bills are, we really have kind of hit the brakes a little bit, where we're going hard to get a solution, but I did want to just kind of bring up what other cities are doing. So I've got one slide to kind of look at some of the options that are being around, because I think there's misinformation, you know, we've been challenged quite a bit on, we're the only city that doesn't allow family-type subdivisions, and this is a table I'll share with you via email, planning commissioners, and if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy, I'm not going to go square by square, but that's looking at the cities around the county, and anything in red there, if you see a solid column, they don't allow exemptions to the subdivision regulations. So it meet, kind of like us, it current status, it must meet, a subdivision is a subdivision, regardless if that's two lots or 200, and it must meet the stipulations. We do have guidelines on whether it's minor rural subdivisions, some of those things, but, but there's no exception. So the exception in some of those powers, as currently defined, are not given to a city, so we can't just completely exempt regulations. We do have other options available to us. Those are the one-time splits, those are, on the left-hand side, there's exemptions that some cities have, you know, if there's a will in place, that's an exemption. If it's 20 acres and they're willing to put a 50-foot easement to that 20 acres, that's an exemption, so don't have to put a front or publicly maintain road, or install fire hydrants. There's exceptions that some cities have. 10-acre lots fronting a road, but otherwise exempt from other regulations, that's, that's common around the county. One-time splits are usually tied to when a, if a lot's been subdivided before, since a certain date, and usually that's when subdivision regulations are adopted. And those are, those even have further stipulations in a lot of cities that, you know, might limit the number of lots on the one-time splits, limit the sizes, ties it to the other regulations within the subdivision, subdivisions that are, talk about lot size and setbacks. And then most cities do what we do as well, and that's some form of a replat, whether it's two lots combined into one, or moving an internal lot line, but not creating a new lot. That is something that most do administratively. So the question on, unfortunately, is we need to see if we even have authority in the jurisdiction, and I think we'll know that by next meeting, and if it is, we'll have some specifics to bring to you. But, but right now, we, we're kind of in a holding pattern to see what happens at the State House, so we'll be monitoring that and be ready to present you with some ideas if that changes, and we'll, and we'll, we'll address those concerns when we get, when we get to an answer.
Thank you, Hunter, thank you. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, S D twenty-one point one-five. Is that you, or is that Buford?
Buford, are you ready to handle that one? I think you've got that virtual.
Yes, and bear with me here while I try to share screens. Okay, commissioners, can everyone see my shared screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, commissioners, this is a very, should be a very simple amendment, and it's essentially the same amendment, but in two different sections of the subdivision regulations. So first of all, will be an Article Four and Section C, and you see the subparagraphs right there, and the amended wording is in red, the strike-through is any wording that would be strike-through, and without reading it word by word, commissioners, the request is essentially, we need an entire subdivision application in digital form. All the drawings, all the narratives, the entire package, we need in digital form, and that's the intent of this amendment, and that applies both to Article Four, Section C, as well as Article Four, Section D. So Article Four, Section C, C is in Charlie, is the preliminary plat submission process. Article Four, Section D is in Delta, is the final plat submitter process. The request is to, basically, all of the, the entire application, as I said earlier, we need it in digital form. This is a segue into eventually adopting Citizen Serve at the planning department level. It's, it's being implemented right now in the building department, and so this lays the groundwork for that, but honestly, right now, we need everything in digital form. It's an enormous task to put together these meetings, and the agendas, and all of the supporting documents, and so, right now, the only thing that we have the authority to require is the plat itself, especially as built drawings and for construction drawings. And so that is the request before you, commissioners, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions for Buford at this time? All right, in that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. I'd like to note that the two engineers that are still here were nodding their heads in the back of the meeting. So, anyway, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, and turn it back over to commissioners.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, S D twenty-one point one-five, move that we approve staff recommendation.
I have a second.
I've got a motion, and I've got a second.
I have Jimmy first.
Okay, we'll go ahead and put Jimmy down for the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Old Business, S D twenty-one point oh-four, a request of a 60-day extension to record a plat for River Place.
And commissioners, I'll describe that for you as well, this is Buford. And so commissioners, River Place received final plat approval by the Fairhope Planning Commission in January of this year. There is a, some revisions were necessary to comply with a request by the Baldwin County Highway Department that are of a very minor and routine nature, that the developer had to make in the field. However, that process set in forth a cascading effect of conducting, getting the revisions approved, both from Fairhope and from, Fairhope staff and Baldwin County Highway Department, carrying those out, and the net effect is, is that it won't be possible for the developer to get the plat recorded before the current 60-day timeframe expires, so this is their last opportunity to request an extension, so that is the request before the planning commission tonight. It's anticipated that getting that plat recorded during this extension period will not be a difficulty, but it was just a routine matter that took some time to get resolved.
All right, thank you, Buford. Any questions for staff at this time? All right, if not, all accept a motion. I've got a motion to approve the 60-day extension. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, was that John or Harry?
It was John.
John, okay, I've got a second from John. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, next item on the agenda is a request for an informal review of Fairhope Downs, a 56-lot subdivision. The property is on 51 acres, located on the east side of County Road Three, a half-mile south of County Road 24.
Do you have slides for this? So you didn't get anything?
Carla, are you still on the meeting by chance? Buford, I'm going to ask you a favor, if you can go into the folder for March, and see if you can share the screen for Fairhope Falls, I'm sorry, Fairhope Downs.
Okay, everyone bear with me just a moment.
And we don't need any kind of a density discussion while you're at it, Buford.
You are on your own. Okay, commissioners, I think, can everyone see the shared screen?
Yes, we can, Buford, thank you.
Buford, do you have the, there should be two colored renderings, if so, can you go to the other one? I would prefer to start there.
Okay, Larry, I apologize, this is all I have.
Okay. That's the new one, yeah.
All right, Buford, if you'll pull the preliminary plat, that's the one with, pull the preliminary plat.
David just sent Buford the. David just sent Buford the two.
It's, it's in the folder. Do the first file, preliminary plat 3, 24 by 36, or wait on what David sent. It's going to take a few minutes to get through our filter on that one.
Okay. Well, I can go ahead and start talking while he gets the, gets the color renderings pulled up. So basically, we initially submitted a 56-lot subdivision in the hopes of being on the planning commission for approval tonight. That 56-lot subdivision was tying into Fairhope Water, and we were doing a water main extension along 24 to help facilitate the development. During the review process, the utilities department stated that they would like us to run a force main along 98 up to McGowan Drive, and so that's about 1.7 miles worth of force main that they would participate in because that area is underserved. We obviously would be incurring some additional costs as well, and also the cost of the infrastructure within the development. So what we've done is the second plan that's currently on the screen, which took us from 56 lots to 64 lots, and so we gained eight lots because with the gravity sewer to a lift station that's being pumped out, we can then go straight by what the subdivision regs would allow, which are your 100-foot lots. And so that helped us offset the developer cost to bring us back into compliance. It also is going to be helping the city with installing a force main along 98 for future development that the city is also willing to participate in. The other plus is with this new proposed layout, the green space has actually increased because the, and that green space increased around the existing grady pond that we're not messing with on the property. So really just wanted to get a chance, since we were already planning on being here tonight, looking, talking to y'all about the project, want to get a chance to get it before y'all, get y'all's input, and because we will be having to redesign this for the new configuration because all the roads have shifted slightly, taking us to those 100 by 200 lots along the south and some other tweaks along the north. So we'll be redesigning it, but since we had time, I wanted to get y'all's input, and that way hopefully we can take any other thoughts that y'all might have while we're redesigning this.
My only thought was, and I talked to Mike about it, and he suggested I ask you, but didn't think it was possible, but is there any possibility for any kind of a connection out on Greeno on this? What is the status of the?
The seller is retaining that property out on Greeno. It's all part of the same one, but they did not want to sell that five acres that front screen, that we're buying, or my client's buying the property from.
I think he might, maybe you could go back and ask him if he'd give me just a little easement in there, I don't think it would.
I can let.
At the point where that road connects, at least ask, because that would be something that when he comes back, he'll eventually, I think, need to do probably a commercial subdivision, assuming he's just holding that on Greeno for commercial, and that makes sense to me. But it'd be nice to have a little connection, especially if he gets some kind of a restaurant or retail business that, you know, this area is all developing in that area, and there's going to be more and more people, and, you know, have access from both directions. That's one of the biggest things in our, you know, subdivision regs, is just trying to get connectivity wherever we possibly can.
Yeah, and we did do the connectivity on the northern road. There is, you know, a draw, a stream on the east side of the site that kind of bisects the parcel on Greeno Road, but we'll definitely, my client's in the audience right now, and he might be able to speak to it, and also he can take that information back. But I believe that conversation's been had, but he can talk more about that. Oh, he's.
I don't know your client.
No.
That is, that shows up on the USGS quads as a blue line, Waters of the State, with a 100-foot buffer, so that's one of the reasons we were trying not to cross that. It bisects the bottom part of that five acres that he's retaining, so it's, it's not as simple as throwing a culvert in there and crossing it, so that was one of the reasons we weren't trying to do it anyway. One of the staff has suggested that we just simply continue our right-of-way out to that east line so that it may be connected in the future because of that blue line stream.
Where does this stream connect, where does it, what does it tie into?
I guess.
Would that be Turkey Branch, or would that be Bailey's Creek?
I think this one's Turkey. I need to look.
I would think it'd be Turkey Branch.
I was just curious.
Any other input for the developer while he's here?
I met with a handful of citizens out there a month or so ago, and I know their primary concern at the time was, was the idea of septic being out there, so I guess with, with Fairhope, we have managed to work around that and be running the force main, as you said, so everything would be on water, no need for septic anymore.
Yeah, I heard some concerns about septic and, you know, lot size out there. A lot of people say the lots are large, you know, some people have mentioned that, and one of the people adjoining mentioned that he would rather not be, you know, have a berm, you know, if the water could be, you know, ditched and taken out one way or the other rather than a berm.
So what are the lot sizes? Another 100 feet, but I can't see the depth on here.
On the new plan, they're, they would be 150 foot deep.
100 by 150, okay.
And on the drainage, you know, we looked at this, and we heard the same comments from the community when we had our meeting, and what we have done is we have made sure along the perimeter where any of the runoff from our lot would have the ability to go onto the adjacent property, we put in swales to capture that, and we're.
What I think his concern was is the drainage, just talk to the, have you all done your meeting out there yet?
Yes, yeah, we have.
Okay. I'll get his, one of the people is in construction who lives out there, so he, you know, knows a bit about that. His concern was that if you put a swell, that it would cause an area that water would sit until it evaporated, based on the possible, you know, based on the soils not necessarily perking real well, and just, you know, kind of mosquito issues. So I'll get that info to you, or he's talking specifically before you bring it back.
Okay, yeah, our ditch that I was talking about actually has about five-foot of fall across it, so it's not going to be holding water. The only thing that we have, I mean, there is an existing grady pond that we can't do anything about, so that's going to obviously hold water, but the detention pond here is a wet pond that will have a fountain that aerates it per the city's requirements, so. But yeah, we gave them all our contact information and told them we would love some photos of some of the issues that they were seeing, because they showed us some on their phones while we're out there.
Sure.
And so we definitely want to look at and see, make sure we're addressing all of their concerns.
Okay.
Anything else?
Question for the afternoon.
Because this is, we haven't reviewed the revised stuff, so, and before we get questions about this, since the public is going to see it, we will have to.
Sorry, I didn't like catching.
Review this.
I don't know what that was.
You and Siri must be tight.
I don't even know how to use Siri, this is new.
And that was the chairman, so.
I've only had six months. I hold myself in contempt, I'm going to throw myself out of the meeting, excuse me.
We are a week, kind of a weekend to get, prepping for April, so timing-wise, you know, I want to make sure we have enough time to review, because this is a new layout and does have, so are we shooting for May's agenda for this project? Because otherwise, we're kind of a week behind.
No, if everything, if we get a good feeling after this meeting, we still have to survey the sewer route, we have to redesign the entire site. I mean, every road has shifted from what y'all saw, so every storm inlet's changing road profiles, so, no, we would not be hitting the March 9 deadline to get this back into y'all for April.
Okay.
And so it would be May at the earliest.
Okay. Are there other issues out there with the people beside just the?
I mean, they, they, you know, like most developments, it revolved around their three concerns were traffic, septic, and runoff. We have a trap.
This is unzoned area of the county, right?
Correct.
You know, it's hard to say anything about it when you have opportunity to be zoned and you want to control your neighborhood, but if you choose after 30 years not to do it, that's, that's their choice. But if you got a grady pond and they're concerned about mosquitoes, I don't know, that's kind of a wash.
We'll gladly turn that grady pond into a nice wet feature, but I don't think we can.
What did, well, just out of curiosity, why would, why were you not using a grady pond?
We tried that route, communicating with the city staff and the city building department, and we couldn't come up with a clear understanding or route if that was going to be allowed. And so versus trying to go through that, I'm going to call it a fight, they weren't fighting, it's all very cordial, but going through that, it didn't sound like it was going to be allowed per the subdivision regs and the wetland ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Are you, are we regulating grady ponds?
That non-jurisdictional wetland is.
That's a non-jurisdictional wetland.
But we do have not allowed in the past any revision of those and required a buffer.
Well, I did realize that because the court doesn't even regulate them. If court doesn't regulate them, holy smokes.
We do. That is, that is Fairhope's history, so.
And just about every one of them that's in a farm field has been eliminated.
No, we're, they're farm fields all over, and we've, we're just being consistent on what.
Well, it may be something to consider down the road.
Okay, yeah. All right.
Thank you so much, Larry.
Thank you.
Chairman, I do have two things to discuss, just real quick. It's old business.
David Dale, would you wait around for a few minutes?
Sure.
Till this is over? I need to speak with you. Thank you.
We did receive our applications in the last week for the April meeting, and just want to make sure, we got a couple of quirky ones, and I want to make sure we give the best advice we can. One is the state's at the Veranda, it's a village subdivision that has been approved, and we've approved phase one. They're coming back to us, and we got a application for phase two and three. The village subdivision only had two phases. So technically, we should revise the village subdivision before we see phase three of that application. But, you know, if it's okay with the planning commission, we'll have on the same agenda a revision to the village subdivisions that will draw up the phasing correctly and then see preliminary plat for two and three on the same.
Subject to the.
Yes.
I think it's okay to put that all on one for.
Yeah.
That way we all kind of remember it all together at the same time.
Right, and I think we just wanted to make sure, and then we also have another application for, for an extension of Long Branch subdivision, preliminary plat. That just came in last week, and it expires before the next meeting. It's one of those preliminary plats that has not begun construction yet. It's two years, and I believe it expires on April 1, and our meeting is April 3, 5? 5th.
How long, you're talking about the two-year expiration?
For the preliminary plat, yes.
Right.
So.
How long has that two-year been the, been the process?
For as long as, as long as we know of, yeah.
Is that a reasonable amount of time?
Yeah, that's what our subdivision regs say, and we have made, we've made kind of a policy that if there's infrastructure started, we'll give two-year, one-year extensions, primarily to try to prevent lawsuits, that somebody's got a million dollars in infrastructure, and you say, hey, sorry, you, you know, can't do it at all, or you have to gut everything because, you know, this and this and this don't work, that we've just basically done two-year, two one-year extensions. We've never had anybody come after the second one-year extension and ask, and normally we've done the second one-year extension, we've said, look, this is it. And we've never had anybody not finish by that time, but normally if there's no improvements, we've just said, you know, reset it if you want it again.
Other improvements out there?
No, sir. In other words, they haven't started or done anything.
They haven't started anything.
Nothing.
That's just what John was, I mean, the same idea he was bringing up earlier, is that they may, they're presenting these others for Fairhope Falls, that they may, may not start.
Yeah, I mean, it's in their plan.
I understand what he's saying, you got to have, you got to have a preliminary plat to get title.
And that's a question.
Or you want to close, but if you're basically closing on more things than you can build effectively, then we, I mean, what is?
And is a village subdivision enough for entitlement? Or a PUD, do you really need preliminary plat, or is just an approval for the project enough for entitlement? I don't, I don't, you know, and then, then as you get preliminary, as you can actually build and not extend too far out, you know, that's something that can't be accomplished. We really don't, not sure what to do with Long Branch. I mean, if, I think we can bring it and discuss it, it will be expired by the time of the next meeting, but we just received this application.
But nothing's been done out there?
As far as we know, there was a building permit.
And so they let your two years, they let your two years expire?
But it never, it was never received. We received an application before we approved it, the building permit.
They, they took their two, their two years as expired by the time the next meeting comes around, and they've done nothing out there.
Have they met with you?
We, we met, yes, we actually had a pre-construction meeting a month or so ago to get started, and that's, the permit application was actually withdrawn, so.
Theoretically, I mean, we can be whatever, but you don't do for one, you're not willing to do for all, but I mean, and you don't want to set precedent.
I think that's the danger right there.
I have deadlines for a reason.
Have the precedent, and so if, if five, three weeks is, you know, we slack off on three weeks and give them something in retrospect, I don't think so.
Okay.
I would be of the, just my opinion, and I'm not the one person, but be of the mind to tell them they need to reapply.
Well, what if somebody, you know, comes in with the subdivision from 1970s?
Yeah.
They've never done anything all with no water retention or.
Yeah.
Fire hydrants or green space or anything, are we going to say, well?
Then, then the question comes, has our subdivision regulations changed for any significant amount from the time that preliminary plat was approved?
I don't know that project well enough to answer that question off the hip.
There's another answer to whether or not, if they came to us in time to ask for an extension, then certainly we could grant it, but I think one of the considerations we need to start having is whether they have to adhere, if nothing's happened yet, they need to adhere to whatever the changes in our subdivision regulations.
And my concern would be that you do for one, you got to do it for everybody in setting that precedent.
Well, this is, this is, this is, this is different because theirs will have expired
as opposed to them coming to us a month before it expired and asked for an extension.
Oh, I thought they had one more month before.
April 1, we don't meet till the 5th, so we receive the application.
Okay, well, it's four days. Well, then is it, is it 10 days, or is it a year?
But even if it was, if we were meeting on April 1, we'd still have to consider an extension, and they haven't started anything.
Yeah, I don't see how we can. I agree.
Maybe the answer to your question is highly unlikely, how about that?
Sounds good. I'll know exactly what to do now.
You have one more, Hunter, or?
No, that was it. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? I move we adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.